And we'll start with review of the meeting minutes. We've tried something new at the request of Carrie and Sharon. Tried to get the minutes emailed to all the board members for early review and comment. And I guess what hap- it happened a little differently than I thought, but I guess that you received the comments and you incorporated all the comments and then you emailed the final.
Yes.
Is that right? So this, what we have a copy out in front of us here is the final one that you did email.
Yeah, and then I got an email from Bill Larson.
From me, yeah, right.
Yeah, late, so I didn't get those in, so those will get in and get sent back out to you guys.
My, the problem I had was the ones that initially got sent out, I had to load a piece of software to open them, and I was reluctant to do it.
I did too.
Some antivirus software it was requesting that I load, and I don't want to load the antivirus software.
And it wouldn't let you do it unless you loaded it.
Look, the message came through, the message came through that in order to open this document, you need to load this antivirus software.
I got the same thing.
Just send it back to us. There should be none of that.
Okay.
Right. I don't know what happened, but that's why I didn't look at them.
Yeah, no problem. No, we will, I'll talk to the IT folks as to why that happened.
So I have a procedural question comment about this. Because I believe I replied all when I sent my corrections, but I guess other people didn't if.
Yeah, don't, try not to reply all.
But we shouldn't have a discussion about it? I mean, if there are points of context in discussion, I mean, shouldn't we know where we're each coming from and how we remember things and be able to?
That's, that's why you don't approve them until you get here. All we're trying to do is to get, you know, some of the comments back so you can see what people are saying.
My initial.
Nothing is finalized until you get here. So you could change the entire set of minutes when you get here in the room and actually go over them.
In order to address that, my thinking was that we would each individually email our comments to Carrie. Carrie would incorporate them, and then at the meeting, like right now, take the meeting minutes and specifically address each one of the comments so that we would all know what the comments were, and we could comment on them now and make the final.
Right, and that's fine. I, you're not, when you're giving her feedback, you're not.
Right.
You're not, nothing is finalized by doing that.
Okay. So is there any way to bump it all earlier then? Because we're basically going to need to review it twice before a meeting. In theory, we ought to review it twice, the initial and give feedback, and then the updated semi-final whatever, which we just got yesterday. I didn't see it till last night.
I don't see the need to issue the second final. If indeed we're coming to the meeting.
Yeah.
And Carrie is going to lay out each one of the comments, then that would be that final review.
Is that really less work for you? If you're gonna like come here with the update and with all the comments that we know, and then does that really save us time?
Well, I mean, it depends on how you guys want it, because I mean, I don't mind doing it, whatever way's gonna make it easier for you guys.
I think it gets people to read them.
Yeah, right.
Which is the real, which to me is always the issue, is people don't read the darn things.
I agree.
So they come to the meeting and they haven't read them, you know?
Yeah.
So, so I'd be in favor of keeping it.
Well, which way would you rather do it? Would you rather have Carrie incorporate the final or incorporate all the statements?
Sure, yeah.
And then issue an email of the final set or wait?
And then vote on it at the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can send out that revised copy with all of the comments two days in advance, okay? So like by Tuesday before Carrie moves, she will send you out a set of revised minutes incorporating all of the comments that you've made. That way, everybody can read them one more time, and, and then you can come in and make changes on Thursday, discuss whatever the changes are.
Okay.
How about that? That way, is that enough time, two days, Wendy, do you think?
Yeah, that's definitely.
Okay.
But except, yeah, I can't sit at a computer at work, but.
No, no, I understand.
Would it make sense in the revision that's sent out to like highlight or do different color?
Highlight revisions, yeah, okay.
So we could key in what you've already said?
That would be good.
I mean, it's work that Carrie would have to do anyway if you came in here on now and made changes. She'd have to go back and make them anyway, so.
Right.
It doesn't, I don't think, Carrie, that it matters when you.
No, no, doesn't at all.
It's actually easier this way.
Okay, are we all clear on what we're gonna do on this then? Everybody in agreement? Anybody not? All right, well, let's use that policy for the next meeting and see how it works.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, Carrie. And meantime, we have a set of meeting minutes here that, does anybody need time to review them and make any?
No, but there are some changes, because these are the ones that I sent her. Under four, new business, Bill Larson proposes to reread the minutes. That should read, reread the ordinance and vote on changes at the next planning board meeting. It's not the minutes we need to reread, but we should reread the ordinance.
And actually, I'm sorry to.
Go ahead.
But as you're going through this, I'm realizing this isn't numbered.
Yeah, I know it's that.
Do you have this one numbered?
Yeah.
The line numbers.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's really important to do that.
On the brad.
It's easier.
Okay.
All right, sorry, Bill.
Well, that's okay. And then under section A, privilege of the floor, I think it's E, no, D, C and D. I would write that to say that Terry Wade is looking for definition clarity of what determines the need for a site plan review, and I would include in that sentence is, for instance, does a change of use require a site plan review, and then delete D.
Okay.
Yeah, because of this confused me. I didn't know what this was referring to.
But I think that's what we talked about, right? Was does a change of use require a site plan review?
And they'll.
And then my question is, is why are, you know, why are those numbered A, B, C, D, E, others have got round bullets? I mean, we ought to just get the format the same.
Yep. And an E, continuing where Bill left off, like 8E. Mark feels that this should be defined better. I don't think this is, is that the need for a site plan review? I guess I wasn't quite sure what the this was referring to there.
Yeah, I think it's, this, yes, I, well, I agree. I think it's the need for site plan review should be defined better.
The need for clarity.
Right, yeah, because he's talking about the same thing, which is.
Talking about C.
People have changed the uses.
Okay, so this is the C. And then up under committee reports, the second paragraph towards the end, that the town corps and board of selectmen will get together, discuss the proposal as a multi-year project to get behind the vision as a whole. That's really not what we were talking about, because that's the CIP. What we were talking about meeting was to discuss the wording of the warrant for the upcoming town meeting and precisely what we'd be looking at.
Okay, yeah, that's what we did.
Right, that's why it's fresher in my memory.
So how would you like, that would, what would you like it to say, Carrie?
I'd tell them what we're going to, to discuss the.
Wording of the warrant article.
Yeah.
Here you go.
Okay.
Unless she stands up.
Well, the reason the roll call wasn't included.
Good.
Five.
Okay, are there any other comments on the meeting minutes?
Should it say agenda at the top? Does it usually?
No.
Okay, so maybe scratch agenda?
Yeah. Maybe put minutes instead because it's not referred to in the heading?
Yeah.
You see that? Carrie?
Yes.
Okay.
And even though you have the date there, it should say minutes, meeting December 14th, just so that everybody's clear on that. I know it does say that, but. We need one more time. We have a motion to accept the meeting minutes as amended.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, the minutes of the meeting as amended.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the minutes as amended are accepted. And I think the first item is the public hearing extent, or continuation. Actually, Carrie, that probably should have been under old business, it being a continuation, something that's already started. So the situation was that we had reviewed with Tara the zoning, the proposed zoning ordinance changes, and we had made some minor changes, or what we consider to be minor changes.
Right.
To the wording, but felt that a re notice was required, and I think that Mark, I was hoping Mark would be here to confirm this, but I believe it's been properly re noticed and.
It was, it was post office.
And reviewed by the town council and all that. So this me, this continued public hearing is to again take up the proposed changes to the ordinance relative to the amended and publicly noticed version. So there are no members from the public present. Does anybody have any further comment or questions with regard to the proposed zoning change?
I have one on, in rereading these, just one minor, on the, what is it, the fourth page? One, two, three, four, the top of the table, it's just a typographical thing. In, in one case, in the table under allowable temporary signs, the first one, we capitalized two, with the exception of the first entry where it's not capitalized, and I think whatever way we go, we ought to make them all the same.
Yes.
That's, that's just a minor typo.
Yeah.
Every capital T.
Well, yeah, it's fine with me.
Okay.
Yeah. But I have reread them, and I thought they were, I found nothing that was inconsistent with what we had originally proposed. I found no changes, errors.
Everybody have any comments on the revised zoning sign ordinance? Again, there's no one here from the public for comment. And if anybody is, for all, they can make a motion to.
Yeah, but just a point of order, do you want to close the public, I think, to close the public hearing first?
I think the motion is made first.
Oh, okay. Well, then I'll make a motion to adopt the, as written, the Article five, Section K of the Waterville Valley zoning ordinance regarding signs.
So the, can we have a second?
Oh, a second.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing now. Now, the, we're voting on bringing this to, we're accepting this and bringing this to the town, is that what the motion is?
That would be correct.
Okay.
This would go as a two-town meeting, it has to be voted on prior to the meeting.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Just had one random thought. If a group, like I'm thinking the REI of Tessa comes in again, and they're temporary signs, I'm not sure that they were nine square feet, but the select board always has the ability to allow larger temporary signs in a case like that, right?
I, I, I guess, I guess if you went to the board of selectmen, could they override these regulations? I guess they could.
It's my understanding they can't.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, it's just that one specific, you know, I was trying to picture their sign, and they were, you know, sizable signs, just as an example, in the past year.
Yeah, I would think the, the selectman would always have the capability of making exceptions with regard to anything like that.
Yeah, that's what I was assuming.
It's always that exception that, you know, nobody thought of, and it's gonna come up.
Right.
Yeah, that would be my understanding. Further discussion?
I guess I have a question on page four, that chart, the bottom right, the developer has the right to further limit signs. What does that mean?
Well, that's, again, refers to the developer or the property owner in this right. I mean, he has a right to always be more restrictive. In other words, we're just trying to state, and maybe it's not necessary, but it, because it is obvious, that whoever owns the property, you know, has got the ultimate say. I mean, this isn't a right in the sense that freedom of speech is a right. I mean, it's, so if you're in a condominium and somebody wants to erect a sign and the condominium association says, no signs, sorry, no signs, you know, you can't, that's private property. So that's what that sentence was intended to mean.
Okay.
That the developer could choose to, and I, and, and maybe it's a poor choice of word, that maybe we should change developer to owner, because the developer could be different than the owner.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, you know? So I, I think might be worthwhile to change, and I don't think that would be a significant enough change, it's just clarification, to change the word developer to owner has a right to further limit signs.
Would you put developer slash owner?
Well, no, I, I think he makes a point, why, if, if there was a case where the developer was different than the owner, why would, why would the person other than the owner have any rights at all?
But if it's under construction, and say someone's living in one unit and there are more units being built. Can the owner tell the developer, ah, no more signs? Is it opening that can of worms?
Why?
No, the owner is the developer.
Owner is the owner.
No, the owner is the developer or the condo association.
Right.
Right, because if somebody's living there, they would fall under. Say that again, Mark. The completed condominiums row, not under the.
Would it if it's still under?
Under construction.
But they're, they're living there, so they're not under construction.
Well, whereas the developer or the owner has the right anyway, is it necessary for the town to tell them it's redundant?
No, it's, it's, Tara would say, it's not necessary to put any of those in. I mean, I only stuck them in for the point of, of clarification.
Well, whereas it's creating a little bit of ambiguity, because some of these questions, I mean, it's correct, when does the developer not the owner anymore? You know, when does it switch hands and so forth? So if it's causing confusion, maybe it's best just to leave it out.
And the other question.
We could delete it.
That I want to throw in there, if we have an owner and the developer's still developing the complex and the condominium association hasn't really been formed yet.
Right, in most cases, until two thirds, it's something like two thirds of the property is developed.
Right, right.
The condo association has no powers.
Because you don't, you don't go ahead and build a condo association not knowing.
But yes, you do. You have to record, the condominium documents are recorded before, before a single unit is sold. That's a, that's part of your approval of a condominium as the planning board.
Yeah, that's true too.
Is that the condominium documents are recorded.
Yeah.
And the homeowners association, even at Moose Run, he had to record those homeowner covenants before you would approve.
Before.
The subdivision, so, and, and then the homeowners association, if there are five units in it and, and the developers only sold one, the developer is four fifths of the homeowners association.
Right.
He owns the other five.
Right.
Right, I mean, so I think owner.
Should stay.
Should, I, you know, I agree with Bill, just say owner, and then you cover everybody.
Right.
Because that's whoever's on the deed.
So change developer to owner.
And, and then you've taken care of, you've covered every eventuality.
But I would agree with this statement that all of these and other limitation comments about, regarding the rights of the property owner are, aren't necess, they aren't legally necessary.
Right.
Because obviously, you know, they, you do have that right. No one forces you to put up a sign. But I stuck those in there so that real estate people can't walk along and say, well, we have an ordinance that allows this, therefore I'm gonna put a sign on your, even, you know, on a condo piece of property, even though the condo doesn't want it. You could see that happening, right?
Yeah.
Or there could just be a general statement in there somewhere that says these, these.
If, if we made that much of a change, I think we'd have to re notice the public hearing. Right, I don't, be close to it, so.
Yeah, you'd have to put another copy out if you're gonna take that call away.
But like everything, we can fix these next year.
Yeah, I think it's probably time to move on if we can. What about changing developer to owner? That would not.
I think that'd be okay, right?
Yeah, I think so, Bill.
It's pretty minor.
Yeah.
Well, okay, then if we change developer to owner, then does the motion have to change to say amended, as amended?
Well, since, go ahead.
Yeah, I would not. I would say, motion to adopt these regulations, because if you say as amended, you're gonna call into question, why didn't you re notice it?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I, I just, you don't have.
They're gonna have D in the paper.
You didn't, you didn't really.
I mean, seeing as the public showed up for a hall.
Definitely.
Going to planning board jail.
Yeah.
We'll come bail you out.
Okay.
I'll bring you oysters, Terry.
You're good.
It's one typo and one clarification.
One word is not.
Yeah, and I don't think it's, not changing anything.
Okay, as Trump says, I'll take the heat.
You like the heat.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. We've had the discussion, any further discussion?
I would recommend we adopt these most beautifully written minutes.
Well, then, all those in favor? All opposed? Okay, the motion passes and.
Can I just make a point?
Yep.
Just so for your information, these now have the force of the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Yes.
These are in effect.
Okay.
As of right now.
As of right now.
Unless they get turned down by the town.
Yeah.
All right. Carrie, I, I kind of prefer to have old business ahead of new business, and we're doing the agenda at this point.
You want old business ahead of new business?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you guys just tell me how you want it. Like I said, this is my first time doing it.
Yeah, it'll take a couple times, shake it down through here.
I'm used to running board meetings for the banks, so.
All right, I wanted to bring up the agreement, we have an agreement with, for.
All right, I'm sorry.
We have tentative agreement with Tara Banford for consult, consulting us for this coming year with.
Right.
The revisions or the review and possible revisions to the zoning ordinance, and secondly, review and possible change to the site plan review threshold with regard to what is, what requires a review and what's not, or an application, what does not. So the question Tara is asking is, look, what order do you want these in, so that she can best prepare for her upcoming attendance in February? And so I'm putting it out to the board for discussion. We have two basic items. One is the revision to the site plan review, which determines what requires a site plan review and what does not. And I believe that there's going to be more of these coming up because the ski area is becoming quite active now with regard to, you know, Tim Smith trying new things. So I have an idea that probably there's going to be more things that fall into this foggy area as to whether or not it's required. And then the second item is the zoning amendments, which we wanted to discuss signs, excuse me, parking. Lighting, I think was the other one.
Lighting, and, and what did she mean by uses? That was one of the things I circled.
Don't know for a fact. Must have been something you discussed.
Was it a discussion around what's the allowable uses on different types of property? Because I don't think we ever talked about that.
Specifically?
Did we?
It seemed to me there was three items, though. Maybe sign was the other one.
Well, I thought the other one was the issue that you've already raised and about a site plan review. When is site plan review appropriate?
That's under the site plan regulations as opposed to the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Maybe Mark would have a little input on that. We can ask him when he comes in. But I guess my question for discussion at this particular point is, which would we rather address first?
Which is the easier?
I think the site plan review and something that I would.
Then I think we ought to get started with that.
Yeah, okay, that's probably a good idea. Mark, your question is.
Just so that we can, you know, kind of get warmed up.
I think it's a good idea, though, too, because I think these things are going to be coming up and I would, it'd be a lot easier on the board to make decisions on that. Tara, in her agreement, had two major items. One was the review of the site plan requirement, review requirement. And the second was the zoning ordinance regulations. And the zoning ordinance, she, I don't know, regulations but ordinance. She listed three subtopics. One was parking, one was lighting, and the third one was use. Can you recall what the use?
Well, I talked to Bill about it. I, I think that relates back to the question about what uses need site plan review and defining those more clearly. But I'll, I'll verify with her.
Well, that comes under, that doesn't come under the zoning ordinance, though.
No, well, that's right, but I don't know what else we talked about uses.
Maybe it was a catch-all just to make, she probably was just trying to make sure she covered everything that we wanted.
Well, we've gone back and forth. We've talked several times about uses within each of the zones and clarifying allowed uses, uses by right, those sorts of things. Maybe that's what.
Just a general view, okay.
Yeah.
All right, does anybody here?
Yeah, well, because I did raise, at some point, I don't, I don't think it's a big deal, we ought to discuss trailers again. You know, because we opened that can of worms and now.
And maybe that's what she's thinking about, though.
Maybe.
Because you mentioned that before about storage units and trailers and what is. You know, so maybe she was thinking about looking at the uses in each zone and making sure they're what. You know, some of town council's approach has been if it is not stated as an allowed use or an accessory use by right, it's not allowed in the zone.
Right.
So we've had these questions because, you know, that, those lists in some of the zones are pretty limited. So if that's what we intend to do, then that's fine. But, you know, we have to understand what we're not allowing in each of the zones as we go through these.
I have a question. And you saying trailers, are you referring to that storage unit that was on the course? My question to you is, I don't know if I'd call it a trailer. I'd call it a storage.
Storage unit, I, the problem was, I, I think in his case it was allowed.
Yeah.
Because you could always argue that it was ancillary to the primary use of the venue, which is recreation. But, you know, could someone put one on a single-family home? I, I, you know, I.
So better than saying like trailer.
So I don't know what you, I don't know what to call them, but I wondered about it.
Horrible units?
Well, because we banned the use of boat trailers and home trailers and RVs. But you could have a storage unit?
Yeah, see?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I wouldn't call it a trailer.
Just to make.
It's, yeah.
Well, but that can, that can be stretched because you put two axles on it and it's an 18-wheeler trailer. You know, I mean.
What if we said portable?
We got a storage unit.
Well, I think it's, I think we need to talk about whether we need a statement similar to that. I'm not proposing what that statement ought to be.
Well, that does, I believe, come under the item use.
Yeah, okay.
Apparently it's going to address, plus the fact that I forgot to mention density. That was the third item.
Density was the, yes, right.
So we have, what we'd like to do is set up the priorities or the order in which we'd like to address these that Tara prepared properly. Now, I agree with Bill. I think that the first item to be addressed is the site plan review threshold. I don't know if anybody has any comment on that, whether they would like to take that later. Don't everybody talk about?
Well, the advantage of taking that first two is, is that becomes ruled.
Right.
We can enact, we can adopt those on our own.
Right.
So why not do that and get that fixed and on we go.
All right, should we then make that the first item that Tara should address with us?
Yes.
We all in agreement with that? All right, we won't bother the board on that. We'll just set that up as a first.
So when she comes in in February then, because that's her plan, the first thing you want to start talking about is site plan review.
Yes, the threshold.
Yeah.
That's the specific item that I would like to see.
Okay.
Now, of the four items of the zoning ordinance, which would be the first that we would like to attack?
Do we need to look at how they interrelate? You know, if you have higher density, do you need to address the parking, like which should come first type of thing? It seems like density might affect lighting and parking. Should, so should we look at in that type of way?
Well, this, the other thing is, I, I would look at it that it's going to be difficult to do anything with density unless you can resolve what you're going to do with parking. So I don't know what you're going to, you know, to me, those two always seem to go hand in hand. That's, you know, so I don't know, you know?
I have a question. When she comes in February and we start doing the site plan review, maybe we want to throw that out to her and which way that we should address, what would cart for the horse or whatever? Maybe she'd give us an up as to what we should be doing first.
Sure.
Where she's a lot more in, in tune to this than we are.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
She might, yeah, exactly. If she, asked her to just do a quick perusal of the zoning ordinance and, and she being the one that's going to be proposing these revisions, maybe she'd be the one to set the priorities. You're right.
Okay, so number two item in February would be a discussion on, on follow-on priorities between the other work items.
Yeah, maybe if she's had the chance to review it, she might have, already have an idea what's best. You may have listed them in the order that she thinks they should be taken already.
Yeah.
All right, if you could go over that with her.
Yep, I'll copy you on my email.
Okay. And just to inform the board, we do have the agreement presented by Tara. I don't, does she give the name of her?
It's just her name.
Just her name?
Yeah.
And Mark and I will be going over this and getting it signed after the meeting if anybody, I don't know if anybody wants to review it, but it's right here.
And the selectmen encumbered the monies from this year to next year, so.
Refunded.
You're funded for that and so I don't have a problem, Bill. I don't see any problems starting in February.
No, none at all. You can sign the document.
Just for information, it comes to $8,000 for.
Right.
Her work through April of 2015.
And you've got nine.
And you've got nine, so, yep.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on Tara Banford agreement or intended amendments to the zoning ordinance and site plan regulations? All right, then we'll move on to any other old business? Any new business?
Yeah, I should point out that at yesterday's selectmen's meeting, there was a brief discussion about creating economic development zones within the town. So the planning board needs to be aware of that. And economic, what is an economic development zone? An economic development zone basically says that for, there's two forms of it, but one of them says for, that if you develop a commercial and/or industrial property anywhere in the town, the town could choose to not charge you school tax as well as town tax for a set period of years or prorate it or do something. It's intended to be somewhat of an incentive to build something new. Or there's another version of it that talks about refurbishing something that's already existing. So I'm just putting it out there, the, for the time being, we've decided not to try to get this, to get more information before we can reach a decision whether this is something we want to put on this year's warrant or not. But I just wanted to make sure that the planning board is at least aware of the fact that that's being looked because that could potentially change a whole bunch of things. But, you know, potentially, yeah.
So there would be ensuing discussions about, I mean.
Yeah, this, I, you know, I think we sent Mark back to, you know, you got to get some more, you got to answer some of these questions. And, and I don't know whether we're going to have enough time between now and town meeting to get those questions answered to the satisfaction of the board. But, but they're starting that discussion, which is, you know, would it be, you know, would it be to our advantage to create such a mechanism, you know, that, to give people some incentive to develop?
I know that Stan, when he was developing the new Brooks Automation facilities, they dealt a lot with the town and the state to get incentives to, for tax purposes and what.
Right.
And then along with that, when he did American Superconductor in Fort Devens, he did a lot of negotiating again with the town, the state, and the federal government with regards to tax credits also.
The, New Hampshire is pretty strict in terms of, I, I don't think you can do anything to get an incentive from the state. I mean, vis a vis when, when they were proposing to, to, you know, put a proposal for Amazon's headquarters, there were no incentives because they can't grant any.
Well, maybe that's a new subject that the state should start looking at.
Well, that's, that's beyond, but we are looking, there are two, there are two existing ordinances that would give us as a town some flexibility regarding tax burden on new developments. So we're talking about it. So I just wanted to make the board aware. And I'll keep you informed that the, what happens, I mean.
That'd be great.
And here the new business.
Did you talk about the town core working group decision?
Not yet. I was waiting for committee reports. I was following the agenda.
I'm going to skip committee reports today. Okay, we'll go on to, if there's no further new business, we'll move on to committee reports.
Oh, okay. So a couple of us from the town core working group, Tom Gross and myself, went to the select board meeting yesterday. And just to clarify what the committee was interested in for the warrant article for the town meeting. So there'd been some discussion about making the wording a bit more vague. As we presented here, we're looking at the entrance signage as well as the sidewalks on both sides of the street, which we received the budget for approximately $300,000 to get that done. There was some debate with the select board as to whether that wording should be more vague and allow the town more latitude to apply that $300,000 to other projects. And we requested that it stay as the entranceway so that the townspeople would know exactly what we're planning to use the money for. Does that make sense? You know, the concern was that if, you know, if we went and said, "Well, we'd like $300,000 because we have all kinds of great stuff to do," that it would be a little bit, you know, challenging for people to make an informed decision about and more likely to be.
It has the appearance of pork.
Yeah.
On a small scale.
Yeah, yeah.
Big.
But where we have, you know, a very reasonable budget with the signs and the sidewalks, we felt like that was something people could really understand. And, and the committee has debated a lot through now the years about where to start and how to best move forward. And that's really what we keep circling back to is the entranceway. Just, is it a great way to make that initial impact?
Do we have a number on the gateway sign or?
On the sign itself?
Well, that project.
Three hundred.
The $300,000. And that is the sidewalks on both sides. Remember, we had the, the A and B plans that we brought where there was either sidewalks on both sides or sidewalk on one side with the sign, entranceway sign on the town side of, of Triple I Road as you're entering to the left. And we had, I, I'll agreed that the sidewalks on both sides made the most sense if we're going through and disrupting the roadway that much, it's make a big impact.
So would sidewalks starting at the sign?
Well, starting at Triple I on this side of the road and fixing the sidewalks on the opposite side of the road instead of having that grassy berm in the caved-in area, hopefully make it all, you know, nice and usable.
And we would sidewalk go on Triple I?
At this point up to, not on Triple I, on Valley Road from Triple I to Tecumseh. And then also on the opposite side, getting rid of that, we, we keep talking about curbs and the grassy strips being detriments to usage and care. So just smoothing that all out. The, the one unknown is exactly how much, but the utilities are tucked in under there. And so we'd always have the flexibility to not spend as much if we decide that that's too much.
And just go to one side.
Just do the one side. Because with Tecumseh as, you know, another big project that the SE group had recommended, getting the sidewalk on there, without it made sense to just, let's start at the beginning of the town and work our way through. If that makes sense.
And it's not sidewalks in the sense of what we have on Valley Road now. It's more by widening of the pavement and striping and things like that to.
More multi-use pathway.
It's a multi-use path for bikes and pedestrians.
So the sidewalks would be flush mark with the road?
They do flush, yeah. And, and, you know, Jim and I have talked extensively about as we go up through Valley Road especially, Valley Road and Ackards Road, as we re, when we get to the point of redoing those roads, to consider taking out the curbing and just go with a wider paved area and have more multi-use path. Because people aren't using the granite curb sidewalks anymore, so.
Especially with, yeah, with the little kids on bikes and parents are afraid they're going to fall off them and it's just.
Yeah, so they're out in the road anyway, so that's, so we're, we've got a, quite a significant portion of the road width that we're not hardly using at all. And so, you know, we'll, we'll have to take it in sections because it's expensive, but.
Would it make it easier in the winter, Mark, for plowing?
Oh, yeah, definitely, because then the sidewalk tractor isn't. Because then the sidewalk tractor isn't as necessary and, you know, you can just plow it with the regular truck.
Yeah.
So it, it actually simplifies Jim's winter maintenance a lot.
I don't like the way that came out up there at the academy, though, where the ten-foot wide sidewalk wasn't raised and there's nothing separating the sidewalk from the road other than a white line. That doesn't seem right. I, I think there should be some sort of a divider, a three-foot divider or something like that. And grass doesn't work in some areas, I know that. But you can, you've, you've seen these areas around where they have, you can pave it and then put an impression of bricks or something or cobblestones or something like that.
Absolutely. Make it a different color.
It would be low maintenance, you could still plow it, but you had to really define the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And up there, that sidewalk is poorly defined, I think.
And those- It is. And, and those technologies, being able to put concrete in and imprint it, make it look like cobblestone or brick or whatever, they're, they're getting much more costly.
Easy to repair, you can paint them on a regular basis, that is.
That's right. Well, you don't have to. Now they're tinting that concrete and you never have to paint it.
Really, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's getting to be more cost-effective, too. So it used to be very expensive to do that, but the technology's changing a lot, so.
Question that I have, too, on the concrete portion, would you have to seal it?
No.
But as far, as far as for the budget that we're talking about for here, that we didn't only talk about painting the asphalt, right?
We, we did talk just about striping, but I think we can, we can look at, I mean, we haven't done final design work anyway, so that needs to be done.
So my question is sidewalk again. This really bothers me. The area down by the new Valley Run building.
Yeah.
Does that three hundred also include that area?
Tecumseh Road will be next in the, the discussion. Like Wendy said, we're trying to get up to Tecumseh Road so that the next part would be continuing on, probably. Tecumseh Road would be the next phase.
Yeah, it's not safe back in there.
At all.
Yeah.
But that was, now, but-
There are a lot of limitations in there with what land we own. And so we've got a lot of work to do.
But that, but that's less murky now, right? I, I thought I heard somewheres that the people at Village agreed to let us-
Yes, they did.
Maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
No, they, they did with some stipulations and we'll have to, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll work on that.
No, they did, they did.
Well. Yeah.
And then the other thing with extending the, the multi-use-
Three hundred goes up to Tecumseh.
Yes, and with having that multi-use pathway up to Tecumseh, it also provides a safe landing point for crosswalks for kids getting to school from, from that neighborhood down there.
So in that area all the way down to, I guess, Tri-Pyramid. In the summertime, we can walk pretty far up the side of the road, okay? But in the wintertime, it's not being plowed as wide to walk on that area. And I think, we talked about this last year, and you said they were going to plow it further so you could walk there. So what we're seeing now is a lot of people walk right in the road.
This, you talking about the Black Bear?
You're talking behind the Black Bear. Behind the Black Bear towards Truck.
Or to-
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
That area, yeah.
Where they're, yeah.
So why can't they do that? And then why, when they come through the sidewalk, plow, why can't they go beyond, further beyond, I forget the name of the, Green Peak? Not Green Peak, um.
The Presidential Congress there on the, on the-.
No, not Presidential, back to where Tina and my couple is.
Snow's Brook, oh, whoa, those are Green Peak.
Green Peak, right. So they stop right there and why can't they go a little bit further down? I don't understand this at all. That's a really, it's a very highly-used area for people to walk and everybody's walking in the middle of the road.
That sidewalk's brutal to clear, though, I mean, it's on the inner-
Well, the sidewalk would not be an option.
Well, no, I'm saying, why can't they just plow the road?
Right, wider.
Wider on that one side where we always walk.
Yeah.
I'm-
I'll ask Jim what-
I'm really confused on what's going on there. It's just a very dangerous area. And we see a lot of cars when we're out there will go by a little bit further than, a little bit faster than the twenty-five mile an hour zone.
I understand, I, yeah.
Can we do something or talk to Jim about that?
Well, I'll ask him about plowing that wider, but I don't know why he hasn't. There may be a reason, I don't know. There are ends of the culverts end in there, there's, you know, we have a lot of drainage problems in that same area, too. So I don't know if he's doing something because of that, but I have to, I'll check in. But all of Valley Road, I mean, Jim has actually almost run people over walking in the middle of Valley Road during snowstorms. So you, no matter what we do, people are going to walk wherever they want to walk. It's, it's terrible.
It's the rule of walking.
It's the rule of walking. They park their cars and they're out of the city and they think they can walk wherever they want. And that's really-
Yeah, but that's, that road's, it's narrow, it's not-
Yeah, it is, it's the worst intersection in the whole town, absolutely.
So could we give that a little more attention or?
Well, yeah, we will try to plow it wider.
My two cents.
No, I, I completely agree. I just, you know, they may be limited with other considerations that I don't know.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Wendy.
Sure.
No other items under committee reports?
So who's going to do the presentation on the three hundred thousand dollar warrant article?
Tom.
We have, we have a public hearing on February-
He hasn't been heard from yet.
We have the public hearing on February seventh. And we have town meeting on March thirteenth, so there should be, this will be-
We'll get the core group together and figure that out and you'll be able to help us with slides and-
Yeah.
February twentieth.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Twenty-seventh is public hearing?
No, the seventh of February.
Seventh.
Okay.
And the thirteenth of March.
March. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything further under committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to communications. I have the, something in front of me, Mark, I'm not sure if you're familiar with this municipal sign ordinance after read versus Town Gilbert. I haven't had the chance to read it, I just moved on here this morning, so I haven't really had the chance to read it.
I don't know.
But it looks like it pertains to our signs discussion. This is from New Hampshire and New Hampshire Municipal Associations. So I'll, I don't know if anybody's interested in reading it or not. Looks like it's a result of a court action.
Could we have a copy of that?
Everyone has a copy.
Oh, good, thank you.
Yeah, it was just something I received from Sharon and we thought it would be just good to put in there. I mean, it was done in two thousand fifteen, but just going forward with the sign ordinance that you guys have.
I, I think these are. Yeah, these are the, the, actually the things that we have been talking about. And a lot of the changes that you're currently making are a result of this court case.
This is the court case that decided you can't talk, you can't restrict the language on this stuff.
The language on the sign, just the sign.
That's good to have. Okay, anything under privilege of the floor? And that being the case, there are no items under tickle files to be brought up. Anybody want to add an item to a tickle file for future discussion? All right, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Mark, when was the budget hearing?